Thank you all for being here. I officially will call this work study for the jump and power retraction school board together. We're going to talk in here since six oh two, we'll talk in here since six oh four, but we'll call it six oh three. Audience for guests, we have none, okay? For extending discussion items are first to discuss residual bond proceeds, and so let's go ahead and move to that. And, um, okay.
I'll go ahead and start. President Chapman, Dr. Eldredge, esteemed members of the board, the first item on the agenda tonight is the 2018 residual bond. The objective for tonight is for you as board members to be able to look at essential capital projects and rank them, thereby allowing for the allocation of the remaining 2018 bond funds so that it can be closed out. So the process will consist of, Mrs. Settle will provide information on the capital projects, process, and some best practices, followed by Mr. Blackburn, who will provide information regarding the project. You will then break into small groups. You will be provided a sheet with all the projects on it. You will then rank those projects. We will gather those sheets. We will tabulate the results and will provide those results to you tomorrow in the week to go forward. And that process will be reexplained once we get to that during the presentation. So with that, we'll turn that over to Mrs. Settle.
All right, thank you, trustees. I just wanted to take a little bit of time to talk about what the capital project funds, what that fund does, and what are some of the allowable transactions within it. Typically, capital project funds are where bond proceeds are deposited and capital projects related to the bonds order our expense. There's a best practice in the days of surplus funds and the general fund that some districts have transferred money from the general fund and committed it in, within the capital project funds for like future capital projects, like major mechanical replacement cycle and some of the things that we saw accomplished within the 2018 bond order. But I just wanted to focus our attention on the 2018 bond order and what was allowable within it. This is the smallest weed we should really talk about, but the Fund 630 is the designation for the 2018 bond funds. That bond order accomplished some essential capital projects related to like roofing and HVAC and replacement cycles, Perry Middle School and Field Middle School renovations, and then our newest campus Sheffield Elementary. And then we'll talk a little bit in the next slide about the interest revenue on the cash held in the capital projects and how that is tracked and used. So a little bit about the unaudited status of the capital projects funds. This is as hot off the presses as what I feel comfortable sharing, but I guess I also want to remind you that it's unaudited. So we are projecting the Fund 630 to end up at the end of August at $25.2 million, of which we've already seen in the first few months of this fiscal year, 2.7 or 2.6 million dollars worth of transactions. So when we talk about available funds as we go forward, we're looking around $22.6 million. So a little bit else about the fund. In Fund 631 has the corpus of the bond proceeds, and so that's where we'll see the majority of when you authorize projects, where you'll see those expenses occur. And then a little bit about the interest revenue held in Fund 699. We have an unprecedented situation where we earned more interest than we were paying on our bonds. That's a situation called arbitrage. And so we're holding the interest in a separate fund to make sure that we have the funds available to send back to the IRS. It's a whole thing. We can talk about the details at another time, but it is important to track that separately because as we have paused on our bond projects, we need to make sure we spend them in a certain amount of time to avoid accumulating too much of that rebate back to the IRS. So five years from now is the number, back to kind of monitor, five years from 2023, which is FY 2028, is when we'll start talking about what arbitrage liability we might have because of where we have seen ourselves in the market and the changes in treasury bond yield. So, but before, to go forward, we're going to talk about $22.6 million. And I have a small exercise here, and I'll let Mr. Blackburn review. Oh. You're almost set up. You're good. Only twenty more steps. Oh, wow.
It's opening another tab.
Oh, okay.
Go to Google.
Yeah, I want to Google it myself, you know. I don't have the link. We have a working project list, and as Mr. Blackburn, at a high level, reviews some of these, I thought it might be helpful for our small groups, for the two of you and the three of you and the two of you, to kind of review the master list of, of course, we always have more needs than necessary, than the bonds, than funds available, but what I would like, I have some extra copies. But as we review some of these projects, as we review some of these projects, I'd like to keep in mind that the administration has come up with some priority there that you see on that, second to the last column. And so we've come up with some priorities, and there are factors in that, but we need your feedback and collaboration and anything that you might see from your perspective or your constituency that might need to be reordered. So I'll let Mr. Blackburn and his expertise talk about some of these projects.
Okay, at the very top, you'll notice, and we've talked about this before, there are some permanent walls and door scope that we weren't sure we were going to be able to, we didn't think we were going to be able to do originally under the 2018 bond scope because it was very involved, but where there are some other renovations going on at these campuses. So this has already been authorized, it's already been approved, and we're going to look to spend those funds along with the 2023 work. So that's at the top, and then if you get into this section, you get into the specifics of what we're recommending as a district for you guys to consider. So for instance, for the high school track renovations, we have several tracks, and you can click on the link, you can see pictures. So Creekview is probably the worst track, but you can just go through these and look at the condition photos if you're wanting to. Creekview, if you look down, you can see a little bit of the rise right here, but it's, substrate is really in poor shape. I would be a little concerned about if it's running on without getting injured. So we're looking to replace this track. Some tracks only need resurfacing. This one probably need replacing. So the same principle applies anywhere you see a hyperlink. I'm just gonna, if you guys have questions, I'm happy to show pictures where we've got a link, but I'm just gonna kind of move fairly quickly here.
Let me ask a question on the tracks. We have spent a significant sum in placing the turf in that.
Yes.
I'm assuming that track replacement doesn't damage or create any issues?
No, sir, they'll stay off.
Okay. I'm not sure that would want to be there.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Indoor practice ventilation and touring these facilities, walking with athletic staff. The current fans and louvers that allow cross ventilation on all of our, Ranchview is not too bad, but even Ranchview has some broken louvers and some broken fans. So you walk in those in August and you're practicing for football, and it's not a pleasant place to be. I would be a little, I am concerned about it. We'd also like to add HVLS fans, if you're familiar with the brand, Big Ass Fans, that's a high-volume, low-speed fan, that's what HVLS means. So adding a few of those to each of the practice facilities, just so our student athletes can practice in a better environment.
Is that clearly much of the locker rooms or attached to those facilities or not?
No, this is just the big areas that have the crossflow fans, and we're looking to add the HVLS fans as well. Tennis court renovations, I can show pictures, but we have a couple of high schools where the tennis courts are beginning to fail structurally, and of course, that also means the water isn't drained, so they'll get a nice big pond in the hole of the court where they're trying to play. So Creekview is especially bad at the end, they've had, they've had trouble with both on the back and on the tennis court. So those pictures there, you guys can look at. Mike, we need to replace the elevator badly at Huey. Several HVAC equipment and controls, these are based on the number of work orders we're getting that we're having to chase down repeatedly, so that's why these are placed in the high priority group here. And then pool replaster, we're probably 13 years into the lifespan of the current plaster job, so it's about ready, well, it is ready to be replaced, that's why that's on the list. There are a few photos there. Oops, excuse me. Fieldhouse weight room equipment. This equipment is definitely showing its age, and I'll look through a few of these. This, this is basically a slick, hard finish, which is not what you want in a weight room. You've got racks that are showing their age, you've got benches that are cracked in many cases. It's been very well used, I think it's had a long and productive life, but I think it would be very helpful for our students if they had more equipment. So, and you can see over here the location, this isn't all four, it's just three. Ranchview's equipment is still in pretty good shape. So that's what that line item is. Again, some more HVAC equipment replacement, another elevator, this one at Creekview. And just so y'all know, if we're doing a major renovation of a campus like Turner, we're including elevator replacement in that major renovation, as you've noticed in the year. So we've got a big current bond project, we're going to take current picture of the current big bond project, but these are not covered in the current bond. Okay, the last thing on the medium set in the list that was prioritized, medium, is the Wesley Building renovation. The reason this was prioritized the way it was, was based on feedback we've gotten from special services leadership, off of Sarah Rowland and her team. Her, she feels like the best option for the 18-plus special services students that are currently in crime is to provide a purpose-built place for them at the Huey building, where special services is headquartered, so they can be convenient to ESDC, to assist there, to be involved there, to be here, to the admin building, and they'd be a very centralized place, and that's what she feels like is the best outcome for them. So that's why this particular one was prioritized where it was, that would provide a place for the people that are currently office in ESDC, I mean, excuse me, they're currently office in Huey, they could be relocated to Wesley, and that would open up room in Huey for the 18-plus special services. Is that my next thing? A little bit of that. Wesley is the building that's right behind ESDC. If you know where the garden is for Metroplex, Metrotax? It's right there. It's currently empty, and it would be a great office, it's a, it's definitely our best option to move those people to where they're basically just, less than blocked away from the garden. And we've already got a shell, we just need to put a new roof on it, make sure the shell's solid and protect the interior, so. That's what that is. Moving on down the list, irrigation, the HVAC equipment. I do have a couple of things on, we did put a couple of filming demos on here, we're getting a lot of criticism at both old Sheffield and old Huey that we're having to see about. They're a significant liability for us. So again, this is on down the list, and we're probably going to run out of money before we get to that if we keep these priorities, but that's something we would like to do in some of those buildings. Let's see. Then Pile Line Concessions Buildings, we did do a Pile Line survey of, and you can see the document there if you want to go look at it. But basically, it's the concessions building for girls softball at Turner and for girls softball at Kelly Field is not anywhere near what the main one is, it's behind a fence or whatever for the baseball program, it's quite different for the girls softball program. So that is something that we need to keep in mind, but since it was mostly taking care of adults and wasn't too much, wasn't so much student facing like most of the others are, that's why we didn't feel like it was a high, we didn't put it higher on the list. Or anybody have any questions about that one?
No, but I know that this is a kind of contention for female, I believe, parents.
Yeah, I know, I mean, they've expressed concern, that's why we did the, did the survey, so you can look at that, you can see the notes that we took. So, and then on that one.
Where, at Kelly Field, where is that?
It's right across from the pole, Middle School, thanks to Meridale Golf.
We added the softball here, remember, so it doesn't have, it's a concession.
That's Neames Smith.
The softball.
I know two of those across the street.
It's where you meet for the MLK parade.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Rest of the list, we talked about the possibility of maybe denting a sanctuary in front of ESDC and having a nice front lawn where we've got sort of a, a nice front door for new families coming into the district, where you could be coming down that street past Metrotax and Steve maybe see a marquee sign or something, welcome to see if the, on that front lawn where that sanctuary is. The sanctuary is in bad shape. Y'all are familiar, maybe doing our student services renovations at ESDC. Stadium scoreboard is beginning to show its age, so that's something that we might consider. And then LED replacements for some of the ball field lights. All right, so I know that was fast. Any, is there?
I have a question. At the very, very, very top, it has the total, it says available, I'm sorry, nevermind, I got confused. Nevermind.
So one thing I did want to make a nuance on the funding, and part of what factored into a lot of the priority levels from administration is the change in the proposition language and statute between 2018 and 2023. So in 2018, it would be allowable for you to include athletics with those funds. In 2023, you will not be able to use your residual bond funds for athletics projects because it did not pass with a separate proposition. So that is part of the nuance of some of the recommendations on the priorities.
And you guys all have access to this in Google, I mean, you can get to this in Google Sheets. If you don't, I probably screwed up the permissions, it just wasn't known on Facebook.
So we want to do all of this, what's at the bottom of it, it said thirty, it was thirty-three thou, thirty-three million.
Do not have enough money to do all of it.
Okay, but that's all of this, is there two minutes?
Yes.
And on the low spectrum down here with all these bulb replacements, I mean, are there lights that are out or are they just only need to be activated?
They're functioning, to my knowledge, they're functioning and working fine, but LEDs would be more efficient, they might be a little brighter, but like, that's why they're low.
We don't have currently LED.
No.
There's not currently LED lighting, it would be a replacement lighting.
We'll put an upgrade.
And the scoreboard is replacement at Standridge or just Peyton?
As I understand it, it's basically keeping the frame, replacing the guts.
The scoreboard above it is an LED scoreboard, the scoreboard where you actually see the score, that's a static scoreboard, it's bulb-driven, and then the audio system. So there's three separate components, and that, the LED scoreboard above it is the most recent, it's about 10 years old, the bulbs underneath that are older, and every time one of the bulbs goes out, those working components is becoming harder and harder to replace.
Because replacements aren't available or?
If you draw a line at the end of medium, is all of that covered?
Just the end of kind of a line.
So just knowing that these estimates are just that, obviously, final pricing can go up or maybe down, but rarely go. I can always try, y'all, I can always try. So what I'd like is obviously a group project, right, with the groups assigned, and one document to come to this, see about, you know, what, how you would rank them together, and that's some kind of consensus. You could keep them the same, or you could draw a line, preferably I'd like numbers, you know, one, two, three, four, that's my damn. But I'd like your feedback so that we can collaboratively meet the needs of the district to the greatest degree possible. And then the preference is to spend down these funds as quickly as possible and put the 2018 bond proceeds to bed. I don't know if Cory could do it by eight thirty-one, but maybe, if he really loves me. Because I would love to just not have this on, on the audit after this year, because I really want our focus to be on 2023 and going forward, so.
Is this list comprised of things that weren't done and should have been done, or is it brand-new stuff that we're looking back to do?
This is just district needs. The only thing that was, these are projects that qualify under the 2018 bond order. The only thing that was part of the 2018 project list that you have already authorized is that permanent wall replacement up at the top of your form where it says 3.7 million dollars, and as Cory explained, could be part of the scope of work in 2023 projects.
Wait, so could be, could be spent under 2023, but you're slinging it for 2018?
It has been authorized under 2018, so any notes or feedback about that particular project could also be received.
Are we confident on what we approved for the 2018 bond projects at Standridge, that cost is covered?
That one's going to have to go up. The sports lighting vendor backed away from the price that he gave our contractor, so we've gone out to additional vendors to get pricing and get photometric maps to compare. And we have gotten significantly better pricing from the other two vendors. I reviewed the photometrics with Renee yesterday, and the vendor that's, the original vendor wanted a million dollars more, so we wanted to talk to a few other people. And the one that Renee and I feel like is the best value for the district is about, it's less than half of what the original vendor wanted. We did have one that was cheaper, but we didn't feel like what they proposed was as high of quality, so that's what you will be seeing in offer, as soon as possible, I will get that in front of you, but I just, we missed the posting deadline.
No, but that, that and the project for the locker rooms, all of that work is already committed and not included in this 22.6.
Correct.
Okay, that's what, yeah.
Is any of the work potentially Bono and Rosemead, do we know anything about campus consolidations, closings, or whatever that Bono and Rosemead would impact our business?
That amount of money that's shown there for the permanent walls and door scope was what we originally planned to try and address that scope at the same time as the 2023 scope. Initial pricing has shown us that we probably didn't give them enough for that permanent wall and door scope, it's just really messy. If we were able to do consolidation, that amount would cover the permanent walls and doors for the remainder. So like I said, let's say, for instance, two of those go away, and the remaining two would be, that scope would be, would be covered in that case, it would still go for permanent walls and doors, or just go to fewer campuses.
And is there an estimated, if any, savings from an electricity standpoint on the LED lighting? Is it material?
I can, I can ask what that would be, but typically, there always is.
But material savings, or is it just that? Material and amount, I don't see that, savings?
I, I would have to ask and see, we can, we can find out. And just so y'all know, we certainly do not want to bring 30 authorizations in front of you, I will try and chump this and group it as much as I can to try and expedite everything, but we will get, you know, based on the priorities that you guys give us tonight, we'll try and expedite and group and get it moving as fast as we can. and get it moving as fast as we can.
I will say that we still, we have, Mr. Finley has sent back some changes for the contract for the Huey building. He still wants that project, we're still working with our lawyers on that, so. I know that's, I mean, I asked Chris to look at how much it would be to dim out in case we wanted to sell that, but he did just recently resubmit the contract.
Did that hook in our session?
No, he would renovate.
At his cost.
At his cost. But if it doesn't go through, it probably best, so I just, but I, we don't know that, I mean, it's still going back and forth.
On the old shekels, is that being used? Is that when I was saying the other day, I thought people were going now?
The only thing I'm aware of that we use it for right now is training for our security officers to run training drills.
And drills in police as well sometimes.
There was some vandalism recently, so parts of it are ported out, because somebody broke in and did the fire extinguishers.
There's vandalism on a regular basis.
There are not people in that building on a regular basis, that's part of the problem.
Is it costing us more money to repair all this vandalism?
Sure, there is, right, resources.
We have to secure the building.
Right.
And we have to ensure it.
Insurance is always the hardest part of it. So, if we could give you about five to seven minutes to work together to come up with a ranking, and then Canada will collect them and.
Cory, one more question. Does Ranch View already have LED lights in our fields?
That was, wasn't Ranch View part of the high school renovations? Yeah, Ranch View just got new lights.
Were they LED?
Yeah, if they just did them, they should definitely be, because I think that was part of that last, what we just finished. Yeah, I know they are, that's right, because I talked to the rep, yes.
Can you explain the Wesley building one more time?
Right now.
It's facilities for a building, so that Huey can be renovated for a couple of million.
It's a two-story old Sunday School building, it has Sunday School rooms down, you know, you got central corridors, you got two stories of Sunday School classrooms on both sides. So, we just got it, opened it up, and make it a general purpose office, like we unload Huey offices into there, and that way Huey can become eighteen plus special service.
But that reference, the eighteen plus.
That would be, the thought is to take that from the prime and the first. So, you're sure you're saying the same thing?
And this would get that, like, the technical facility. So, the second one, so you know how it's, the estimate is, okay, let's say the first, two point seven, right? Is it two point seven per campus or two point?
No, that's for all three camps.
For all three, okay, I wanted to clarify that, thank you. Did you hear what I said?
I just, it doesn't operate. Some of the newer, well, I mean, I, my neighbor had twenty-year-old, no, it was twenty, at least twenty-five-year-old, they were in Huey's house, had an eleven, ten-years-old dog, it was a hot rust, so.
Sir, on the, on the Mary Grimes, that would be replacing the whole HVAC for the whole building, not just chunking the board here? The AC, all the whole building, not just?
Air conditioning units, yes, man, yeah, it would be unit replacements, it's a whole motion.
And thinking that in the same manner, spending that heavy with the possible replacement? I don't even know if that's even considered, but I know it's a real issue.
We're moving a different route.
We're not, Huey isn't being looked at in the nuts.
Mary Grimes.
I'm sorry.
Number twenty-one on the list.
Yeah, so HVAC, Mary Grimes, I was asking a complete redo of HVAC for the whole building, or you're just gonna patch it?
Grimes is on there, yeah, it's, it's replacing the units. Replacing the unit, because even if we do something else with that building, we still plan to do something else with that building. Plan to use it, so we plan to keep it active, keep it, it will be fully occupied. Regardless of which way we go, that building will be fully occupied. So, that is just what?
Did you hear about that, the nineteen ninety-six AC? So, running strong.
Red, just like the fall.
Uh, yeah, they can't do this.
They're rules, or do any?
I know, I know, but the concessions is in my next one. I won't say that, I put on all the rules.
So, thank y'all very much for ranking the priorities, and we want to give everyone the opportunity to share any perspectives or thoughts you had regarding the exercise.
That was fun.
We had it fun, anything else?
I wish we had extra money, yeah, a little help, a million more. But our group decided that we agree with y'all about the high and medium priorities, and so we agreed that those first high and medium ones should all get done, and then we ranked the ones below it in case anybody's wants to pull off. What are the highs and mediums? Because we agree, those are of utmost importance.
Agreement there, do you want else?
We did a athletics, wow, all of the projects are, you know, important and some might be a higher, you know, need, but looking ahead to the restrictions under it or on us by the state, that athletics was in a number ranking in those lower, I guess it would be lower numbers, because we ranked it in the lower numbers to be able to use those funds, because as we've seen, you know, athletics, while these, I don't know that we would, you know, be able to clearly communicate, these are needed things on a future bond, because all people see are, damn.
You're right, this is the best opportunity to move forward the projects, because it's highly likely if they're not done with this, they won't get done for quite some time.
Well, or that, yes, because then we would have to use general, you know, or a proposition that would be too, you know, risky, and then that delays, you know, some of the maintenance or some situations that would save us money or.
We took that same viewpoint on the concessions things and swapped something out for medium to protect that. Because that's a huge expense.
Well, in the recent taxpayer annexing all of those requests around us, we may not ever see fund money for athletics.
And the athletics is also for fine arts because our bands, they use the indoor to practice, they use the field, the track. I mean, it's not just athletics, it's really a space. Except for the tennis courts, which I think the one at Crepey is twenty-one years old was the last time we ever used it again. Or we was ever upgraded.
It's not usable.
And then we went from our impact to students, um, in our ranking and went, you know, back and forth.
Anyone else? Again, thank you very much. We will tabulate these and we'll get you that information tomorrow. Now we're ready to go to the next agenda.
Just going to review and discuss our legislative priorities.
Take picture.
In the action. First thing to communicate to all the board. We passed an excellent meeting with Raise Your Hand Texas with Deanna, I don't know what it's been called. Deanna, uh, this week. And, um, she was incredibly complimentary to us that first of all, we've got some legislative priorities. We put them down on paper and developed a committee of reporting on it. Saying we're far ahead of a number of districts in that regard. And, uh, so that's exciting to hear and wanted to share that with the whole. You see, and Dr. Eldred put together and consolidated this, um, sort of roadmap ideas that, uh, she had for us. Uh, and so it's this legislative priorities piece. First thing that she said we need to get done is to review and approve our board policies. And, uh, so I would hope we can reach consensus tonight that we're comfortable with these, we'll just go and do whatever here among. But the plan is to approve them tonight and then agendize and officially.
We can't approve them. It'll be on the next board agenda.
Well, okay, I approve, I approve what we put together to, uh, but they will land over to the next agenda. And on that agenda, uh, then they will get official approval and we'll have the. Her suggestion was to us that it helps to codify our priorities both in our minds and in our practice. But it also provides a certain amount of cover to the board, uh, as we're working with the community and working with others. Uh, because it's not Randy's priorities, it's not, uh, you know, individual priorities, but it is approved per set of priorities that we as a, uh, board have established. So, uh, that was the first piece that she suggested. So with that in mind, let's go ahead and take a look at the priorities.
Just for clarification, it's not policy, it's our legislative priorities.
As we look at the legislative priorities, uh, any initial reactions, comments here? Couple of things that we can take a look at, but. Are we comfortable with these, with the wording of these? There's a discussion that we'll have following this about possible issue.
Can we take five minutes?
Yeah.
Let's take, uh, four, five minutes and read through these and then come back with any suggestions.
I think we'll get Dr. first, thank you. I think we have a couple of edits, but nothing. What do you think?
Um, no, I like the, the wording, um, in the first section on number two, increasing teacher compensation and benefits. Um, I mean, that's always our priority, but a lot of that is in our control. But what if it's, you know, more clearly identifying something related to what the state can control with teacher compensation or benefit? Does that make, I hope I'm.
Yeah, they say one of the things that we.
Not the legislature, it's us, but we need the money to do it.
What was the wording that Raphael used today? Because I thought that was really good when he was talking about the teacher compensation that was promised. I just had to go, I mean.
I know, so I know exactly what you're saying.
State-supported teacher compensation or state, state-provided or state, whatever the state controls regard because we are essentially in charge of teacher.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I guess the, um, probably need a little refresher on exactly what we control in our benefits. Because I know we can pay in more to our teachers, but the teacher benefit packages that are available have really high premiums.
Right.
Yeah, but that, T R S is considered a benefit. Um, so, yeah, so I, I see what you're saying. So do you want to stick the word state in there somewhere?
I don't know, I don't know what the right statement is.
I know what you're talking about though.
But like what they support us either through money or different benefits, you know, that they control, not what we. Because number one, we'll provide some relief on that, you know, so.
Um, I would just add on number one, I don't know the exact language, but with an inflationary, an ongoing inflationary adjustment. Because if they, it's great to increase it, to request they increase it now, but we need them to just make it auto-renew.
Auto-increase.
Auto-increase. Three percent every year? I don't, it's like, actually like an inflationary adjustment.
I think that what they said at Raise Your Hand Texas was, um, subsequent adjustments. It with inflation, right?
Like we want it included, we don't want you to have to come back.
Just like the normal cost of living adjustment.
We're just talking about that. And then I might suggest in the very first paragraph, we change it from highly successful educators and staff to highly qualified.
Okay.
On number four, we might say allowing great, uh, summative assessments. Like I feel like we have control over our summative assessments, but state accountability assessments.
Okay, so here's the one for you Tara. It says support teachers, um, through increased compensation and benefit packages. And they put a dollar amount of at least fifteen thousand dollars.
I don't want a whole.
Yeah, I don't want to put a dollar amount, but we can, I can search, um, to make that more state-based.
Maybe the same thing that. I should be careful that they don't tie it all to like T I A. Like we just.
Right.
They will increase the basic allotment, we can provide to our teachers.
I think really it's focused on the benefits too, because that went up this year. So even though we gave a raise, the insurance package went up significantly.
Decreased the raise. Past governors have just given a flat-out raise, so, um, they've done that winged ones.
I'll work on it.
And then for number six, our official bill number is House Bill seven fifty-nine. That's exciting.
Yay.
And someone filed a duplicate on the same day. How many were filed on this week reading?
Fifteen hundred more.
So I think we need to, if you can send that information, um, to me, I will send it to communications because I think we need to start promoting that. That we are behind this, so.
I will send it.
If you send me the little.
Yep.
We need to get that out.
So, um, we're seven fifty-nine and then another companion bill went in, but we're, I think we should promote seven fifty-nine because it was first. And that's the one I'm trying to get co-authored on. Other changes. So it's like those matter changed and then number two is pretty differently. Can we, should we add anything about unfunded mandates? Or funding like safety and security properly, half-day pre-K properly?
Well, I think one of the things that the right Raise Your Hand Texas representative said was try to keep it as simple as you can. And if you're really, we really want, um, the increased funding allotment. And if you get too much into the weeds, um. Because if you have these ready and we're passing these out, we also want to be clean and clear that we're not trying to go, okay, and you didn't do this and you didn't do that. And we need this and we need that. So it's really, as the North Texas Commission says, it's really funding first. Like that's the whole theme behind this, this session.
Then we can even. Yeah, across the state, it's, I mean, it seems to be everyone's decreasing their focus. Their focus to try to prioritize what really matters. And, you know, I had a conversation about this pre-K, um, funding. I know we have half-day pre-K, but it's a full day on the day, but we only get half-day funding. It's very interesting and complex. And as much as I would want to say, let's put it on a priority, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, feels about pre-K in general. Um, and if it should be a legislative priority or if it should be a, kind of like what we just talked about right now, is it a bigger focus? Is it going to be addressed through basic funding, um, to the basic funding allotment? Uh, what are y'all thoughts on that?
Well, there's already evidence that pre-K, students participating in pre-K, you know, have a head start. As their kids. And, you know, that's an academic growth and success item. And I think it, we could easily include that in a second section in the, well, but it's related to school accountability, never mind.
Well, I mean, you could add it to number four, fully fund pre-K.
And it's, what do you mean? I'm sorry, are you saying number three or number four?
Well, I think you could add it.
Oh, add a four.
And then everything else could enter to address these matter C F B supports. So enter changing funding, would you put fund, fully fund pre-K?
Does everyone else agree with that? I mean, I agree with the head start and plus working class, we have so much within our community that we could support our families with. And this is actually a really big deal, but I'd like to get everyone else's insight.
And it's true for all of the grids work force and helps our students need.
Torres are available to all. It's really the issue of the unfunded.
Which is calling being funded mandates, but, um, I, I'm also agreeing with, but I think that's the problem, the problem I stand with the grassroots effort with what we do with North Texas is that there's twenty things on there. It's like, okay, well, what's really important? So, you know, you have to feed your top three and go with your top three and be really firm and really excited about motivated to fit those top three. Them are the words I feel. To that point, um, Ken, what you're saying about the top three, um, what I like about just the way it is right now is like, it's clear that there's three things. But in the second one, it specifically says an effort to improve school accountability. So if I'm quick scanning this, I saw the word school accountability, but on the first and third one, it doesn't say in red what it's addressing. So I just wonder if we can change that to, to address these or an effort to address funding or an effort, you see what I'm saying? She's, I get it.
Oh, I got you. Okay, just put that in there so I don't, I mean.
See what I'm saying?
Yes, I get it.
You literally go, oh, the second one's talking about school accountability.
Yes, just.
And I also think that if you want the public behind you, keeping it a three, it's much more easy to handle. I mean, we can easily make a graphic, like a graphic, it's like we're supporting accountability, funding and our state teachers for.
If you could just draw that on the back of your paper.
I do think we.
When I get back to it, I will forget.
I feel like there would be a way to, because with each of these, yes, there's three points, but with each of these, there's some sub-points. I feel like there is a way to add something like pre-K or as an argument for one of those three points. So basically having it in there, um, but not as one of your three primary. Does that make sense, like a subgroup? Yes. I mean, even with school accountability, I mean, the whole reason we're talking, one of the reasons we're talking about pre-K is that it gives these children a head start. So wouldn't that be part of school accountability? Or, sorry, to improve school accountability? Or it could be, it could be written that way.
Academic achievement.
Yes. Accountability. I mean, because I think a lot of it is just about how we write it and focus. And yes, I think these bullet point or these three red points, we just, it will be helpful if they're just very succinct.
And that's. Okay, is it funding, accountability and teacher support?
Yes.
Then you could move number two down with number six and you would have two bullet points under each one with those three buckets. You could just rephrase number two a little bit.
I think that's called collaboration and, you know, we can go back and forth.
Y'all can overall grade.
Yes.
Maybe, I mean, like, make sure I get that. And then I'll send it back to you and you can, I'll make sure it's not in a P D F.
I know, I know what you're saying.
But then if we're moving, uh, one of our top three, which is increasing teacher compensation down to number six or five, that's kind of leveling up the, uh, it would. I would, I see what you're saying, but I think you would say that our three overarching priorities are these things in, in red. And then what supports those are these kind of the two.
It's just four many points.
You could do this as dash of these numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
What you can do to avoid that would be, it's a bullet says Mr. Numbers. So here's red to this, uh, and then bullets under this.
So can we circle back to this? I've already taken out Brady's hotelics. If he wants me to take out the numbers, that's fair game.
So just for clarification, are we gonna add the unfunded mandate in pre-K or should we not? I don't, I wasn't clear on that.
It would be upset.
No? But you could add stat-funded and stat and funded. Because again, the pre-K mandate, I mean, there's just one more mandate that they've given, it's not.
It's unfunded, yeah.
Oh, stat and fully funded.
And fully funded, I guess.
And fully-funded, I get it.
Because that pulls in the pre-K, that pulls in the security, that pulls in all the things.
Yeah, there you go.
All right. And our goal was to keep it on one page, which we did.
It looks great. You have a wonderful job.
It was a team effort. We have a very good committee.
Is this gonna go on our website when it's all polished?
Yeah, we'll have our, we'll definitely have it on our website. And then the other suggestion from Raise Your Hand Texas was that we could possibly print this like on a five-by-eight card, and you all could have them ready. We would give you each some, so when, if you're meeting with someone, or, you know, because there's a lot of influential people in our community, that we could hand them out and say, here's our priorities, here's, so I thought that was a great idea.
Good idea. Working with the bucket list, or the bucket graphic, whatever, RMA, the graphic, that's also easy to understand. Between the people that are not.
A bucket graphic?
Yeah, the graphic. I don't know what, you have to decide on buckets. You said, someone said buckets, I'm going with that bucket graphic. And then our three buckets, and then this.
Cassandra.
Yeah. Bucket graphic.
Are we comfortable with that and Doc or Eldridge work with it? I'll work with her on that.
We'll pass it back to Cass.
We'll get the italic back in it. And we'll get this out ASAP. Need for you to review it, turn it around, and get it back to us as quickly as possible, because we want to get it on the agenda for the upcoming December meeting. And the date, the last date to have that up is kind of November, I'm not looking.
I'll post next Friday. Well, I also want to have it available for a joint meeting, because Farmers Branch has sent us their legislative priorities, and I think we need to give them ours at that meeting, so.
We can always.
We will put draft. Yes, thank you. I'll add that to your.
Other items that were recommended by Raise Your Hand is number two, to sign up for the Across the Lawn Newsletter. This is a newsletter that they produce, and we would like to encourage all of us to be getting this. Now, this is not something that we forward, but we're going to sign up for it, all as board trustees, but we'll have opportunity to encourage people verbally to sign up for it. And anybody in the district can get it. We would encourage that.
Just stay informed.
Right.
Stay informed during legislative season.
Up to date.
And so let me encourage you to go ahead and get that done and have that moving. The next piece is the Advocacy 101 meeting, and we need to think about scheduling that, when, when we like to do this. Advocacy 101, it's where they come in and provide for us specifics, instruction that would help us to fulfill our legislative agenda. And so we would like to get that, now this will.
Do you want to do that before Christmas or after? What are we looking at?
We are working on a plan that will be rolled out hopefully soon, so it's all kind of still getting worked through.
Okay.
So they, Raise Your Hand has a representative in our area, and Eliana's in contact with him, and so we'll get some dates of when he's available.
And hopefully it'll be on a work study, where we're not adding another meeting. We're just gonna kind of go with the.
Thirty minutes, please.
Thirty minutes.
And then they will also come and do one for our leadership team, and I guess they need that day.
Another piece is that they're working on the media plan, some specific ideas, and we're in contact, and we had it done, and we'll work with that.
With our communications director.
Right. We're in the process of already beginning that, with Dr. Karen, and she's helping to get us up to speed on op-ed situations. Finally, is the idea of a potential Capitol visit. Let me rephrase that, an Austin to the Capitol visit. And so, as we talked in our meeting, we think it would be advisable for us to pair in with somebody, Metrocrest, Chamber of Commerce, Farmers Branch Chamber, Carrollton Chamber. We haven't identified a specific group, but to have opportunity to get together and go with them to strengthen the size of the team going from this area, but also to give us opportunity then to get there and then work on it ourselves. That, there are no dates out there proposed. We may well hear about this coming week as we meet with Farmers Branch, what they're doing and what they've got scheduled now. Any questions, suggestions, comments, thoughts about a Capitol visit?
Yeah, it's a great idea. I spoke to Steve Abbott briefly about it. They actually had shirts already made, but they had no date or plan in mind. I don't think they're waiting on us or anything, but I mentioned to him about combining resources. And then this is free, and he thought that was a great idea, so, you know, if Farmers Branch, Carrollton, and us all go, that would be fantastic.
And I spoke with Mayor Terry Lynn today, and he said, "Awesome."
And then Michael said, they're sent up as in December, and they're planning a billboard visit. I'm much question.
And the PTA rally day is February 24th. So you'll have PTA Jamal Cross Texas down there, the state Capitol, which makes it extremely busy, but.
It's not Friday, it can be. It used to be active at Thursday. Because that entire week, I think there's some, several other groups going, like the 20th, 21st, 22nd, that range that I've been hearing about.
Something that's that whole week.
So that whole, is that the fir, that's not the first week, because they have it in January. But that whole week is apparently several organizations are arranging things, which might mean they're gonna be really busy, or it might mean they're gonna be in their offices a lot because they know everybody's coming.
Twenty-fourth is actually a Monday.
So it's the week before that several groups are going.
So if the goal of our, for us is to meet with our representative waller there, then PTA rally day is not for the day ago, because PTAs will be.
What do you think, Ken?
PTA rally day is February 24th, which is on Monday.
Well, and Eliana, if you talk to Matthew, Raise Your Hand said they would create an agenda for us, but that would be, that we would go as a group, and we wouldn't be joining a group, so. But perhaps, since he has this area, you can ask him if, who's going on what day, and we perhaps can join another district. Yeah. Or another, yeah, another school district in the area, or just use the rep for this.
Well, and I know that some of our reps want to see us down there, and want to get together with us to collaborate with cities, and it's gonna be a bigger thing. We're just getting started and moving.
Yeah, and they'll have the days where they're actually in our offices and receiving people, and they'll have.
That's one thing is.
A whole thing, so.
There's also like, sometimes you go and they're legit on the floor, and you're gonna see their staffer, and you're gonna meet with their staffer, and you're never gonna meet. So just have to prepare for that reality.
Yeah, and then other times of the day that they're gonna be in, in the chambers, whatever they call that, on the floor, so.
You could also do a meeting here locally in our office.
I'm trying. I have a, we have a rep meeting on December 10th with two reps, Raphael Anchiya and Cassandra Hernandez with Dr. Eldridge. So we're, we're getting, hopefully, their support to have other reps come to us. We're working on it. You know, I don't even know exactly the districts that they represent there in our district. I know 115 of the pride. And I don't even know what the other one is.
Setters.
Yeah, I'm going. Can you update that list now that the elections happen?
I think it's next week. There's a North Texas Commission for Superintendents and Leadership, and they, there will be a lot of information come out of that as well, so I'll keep you updated. The other thing, I cannot go to NTASB next week, but I did hear the preview session, and there is a group from Frisco, Dallas, I see, and Plano, I see, have gotten together, and the training next week, the first half of it is going to be, they're revealing a website that's gonna have downloadable resources for everything in North Texas. It's gonna be like fillable. Like literally, you download it, add your information about your district to it, and you can walk in with like hard numbers for legislature, for the legislature. So I would just highly encourage you, they also took all of their slides direct from TEA, so the information that they're presenting is solid facts that have not come from a bunch of different sources. So if you're able to go, I think you'll get a lot out of it, and it'll kind of arm you even more. So those are the same representatives that do our meetings, so we're trying to all make sure that we're saying all the same thing, and that is going to be the Funding First website, and.
So they're releasing it to trustees next Wednesday, heard.
But it's amazing, the work, you're exactly right. That's the work they've done is to consolidate everything, and everything is very factual, so.
Love it.
Caroline? I'm sorry, I heard you say something about Michael said Metrocrest Chamber is what day? Or what did you say?
December, I know it's sent off in February is what they're planning to go.
December when?
I don't remember. Did I send you that down?
I think it's December 10th. That's, that's, that's a Plano, Frisco, and there are several districts.
And any other discussion on that point?
December 10th? Is that just, no, that's. No. I have November 19th with Carrollton City.
That's Farmers Branch. City Council.
City Council.
Okay.
I'll look at it real quick.
I was like, I can follow up on that, but I'll, I'll ask you Caroline in just a minute, so we can.
Yeah.
Okay, then, next item is our closed session, and talking about the evaluation tool for our superintendents. Move to that section. Move to that section.
I just haven't hearing none and seen none. I believe we've reached the agenda item on our menu. So here we go, we consider ourselves adjourned at this time. Thank you everybody.